Recent changes made at the recycling center which has had a lot of modifications on what is being made at the recycling center. Joining us this evening are Joyce Hataula and Tom Lynch. We thank you for your time this evening to discuss these important changes with the program as well as some new initiatives that you want to discuss regarding yard waste collection. So we'll turn it over to you and I know I have questions, I know my colleagues have questions as well, so the floor is yours.
We've done a lot especially in the last two weeks with the recycling trying to get out the information to the public. We've put out five radio stations, we've been on TV, we've been in the paper, we've taken TV ads, trying to get all the information out to them. The new information came to us from the recycling center that they will not take anything but plastic jars and bottles, glass jars and bottles, tin cans and aluminum cans. That's all your co-mingle. Everything else is garbage.
And regarding the plastic bottles, I know everything has a little number on the back. What numbers are allowed to be put into the recycling?
We're not dealing with numbers anymore. Right now, the numbers that we're taking are actually one and two. That's all that the recycling center wants. That's the good plastic.
So number one and number two?
Well, we don't, we're not actually using numbers one and number two. It's the plastic bottles, plastic cans.
You know, what I wanted to, Tom, that was really good. What I wanted to say, because I go back longer than, you know, many years with the recycling. Barbara and I at the recycling center didn't use the numbers for many years, like, almost like 25 years, because people would get so hung up on those darn numbers. And number one and two are about 90, 95% of your plastic anyway. So when you say bottles and jars, you're getting most of the plastic that we could recycle. And so we stopped using the numbers years ago because people would get hung up on those numbers. And the number really, sir, is the type of plastic resin. They're number one through seven, with seven being other, and that's a mixture. But the numbers were set up in the 1980s. It's a type of plastic resin, like with the number one being polyester, number two being polyethylene. And so that was meant for sorting at the back end, like when it goes into the manufacturing facilities. Well, whenever the people see the number, they think it's recyclable. And it just was meant for the type of plastic resin. So it makes the education hard. And, you know, the public wants to do the right thing, but these items never really were recyclable, like the big dome containers and the yogurt and the deli and the, you know, the styrofoam. We never took them, but the recycling center never turned them away because China, India, were taking them all these years, and I think honestly, they were throwing them away there.
Yeah, we never asked for them. They just gave them tools, and the recycling center did take them. And then all of a sudden, it's just stopped. They're not taking it.
So for the public, disregard the numbers?
Yes.
Bottles, cans?
Jars.
Jars.
Bottles and jars of plastic, bottles and jars of glass, tin cans, aluminum cans. That's your co-mingle. That's the extent of it.
Can I ask you about this brochure? It's a fairly informative brochure, and it's pretty simple for people to follow. How are we getting this in the hands of the public?
Excuse me?
How are we getting this in the hands of the public right now? Because I've seen this once or twice myself.
Right now, I put a couple of ads in the paper that if anybody wants to have a civic organizations, groups, they want us at neighborhood meetings, anything, give us a number and we'll give a talk to them. Last week, I put out 5,200 to all the schools in Scranton, all the elementary schools, for the elementary kids to take home to their parents.
Can we, for example, I think a good point of purchase might be like grocery stores and convenience stores. Is there a way we can get them into those locations as well?
I can't hear you.
The grocery stores.
Grocery stores and convenience stores, things like where people go on a regular basis, once a week, you know, that if we can get them into those type of facilities, I think we'd get more people looking at them. Because I think it's, there's a lot of confusion, obviously, what happened recently. And, you know, it should be in everybody's house. Somehow, some way, it should be in everybody's house. It probably should have went out with the garbage bills, to be perfectly honest with you. We should have put it in with the garbage bills. I'm not sure if we ever thought about that before. It's too late now, but it's something we should do in the future. It wouldn't increase our costs very much, and we'd be able to get it to every single unit that's paying the garbage, garbage fee.
Two years ago, we did that flat mailing. It was very nice. And it went to like 30-some thousand homes.
Okay.
And maybe we should do another one. What we wanted to tell you is the state will pay for the printing. They won't pay for the mailing. And the state grants also paid for those radio ads and the ad in the Scranton Times. But they won't pay for the distribution of it, like the mailing. But maybe we should, maybe there's a way we could mail this.
Well, again, we do. I mean, we have the garbage, they're already gone out, obviously, but that would have been a source, I thought, would be a good place to start with. I know there's a company that is sending out information on sewer line protection and water line protection, and, you know, they represent themselves as representing the city. That might be a way as well to get it out there to the public. But, yeah, we need to find a way to get it out to as many people as possible because, number one, it doesn't do us any good if they're putting the wrong things in the recycling containers. Number two, and you would both admit this, I mean, our recycling is anemic. I mean, we need to find a way to increase recycling. It reduces the cost at our landfill. It's good for everybody. And what I find is only the people that care are recycling. Everybody else is just like, yeah, I can't be bothered with it. How, in your opinions, what else do we have? Is there anything we can do as a body legislatively to increase recycling in the city?
Well, I'm not sure this is what we want to do, but we do have the ordinance. Remember that the ordinance does have a fine in it, especially for businesses, but I'm not necessarily saying we want to fine anyone. I think we need to let the education work for a while. I don't necessarily think fines work. But we do have that ordinance. And Tom has been out to a lot of the businesses, talking to the downtown businesses, especially working with Scranton Tomorrow, trying to get them to understand that we need, that they need to recycle. It's not only a state law, it's in the city ordinance. But remember, we do get some money based on how much is put out at the curb from the state grant, and then the businesses. So again, we do have that ordinance. Maybe we can publicize that we have that ordinance. I don't necessarily say it's the time to fine anybody. But, Tom, we were also talking about trying to get these in the bags at the grocery stores. I know some folks, Tom, we were talking about Garrity's.
Yeah, Garrity's.
Right, exactly.
Maybe Garrity's, Redner's, seeing if we could print enough that they'll put them in the bags for like a week. Giant.
Giant, absolutely. That's what I was, really, you're talking about before, is how do we get it to the people right in their hands when they're out there doing their daily shopping?
We also gave, we also sent emails, and we've spoken to a lot of the neighborhood groups. We're going to be in Southside, is it?
We've been in Southside, we've been in North Grant, and we're coming, going up to North Grant on the 6th.
And we asked them if they would please take a whole big stack of these and help us to distribute. But maybe we should do another mailing.
I think we should. Is there, is there something else we could do that we're not thinking of that would increase recycling, that would get people to be more participatory in the process? Besides education, I know we've been beating the education drum for a while. An incentive, a disincentive, I really don't know. I mean, I know that we talk about a per bag fee every now and then. I'm sure that would drive up recycling, but I'm not sure if that's going to go anywhere, so.
Well, the state has done some studies, and sometimes the per bag fee does increase the amount of recycling. Now, there's a lot of smaller boroughs that have good recycling and more than the city has, but they're smaller. So it's hard to say, it's hard to compare, you know, Scranton to Archibald or Blakely or Troup, you know? So that's difficult. We could talk about something like some contests. Tom, we were talking about being out at more booths. We're talking about something on the 3rd of July.
Scranton has, we'll have a table set up.
Scranton Times, or the KRC and Froggy.
Yeah, Scranton Times, yes. Scranton has, because they're going to set up a table there.
We're going to have a table where we'll pass these out. But I think the grocery stores, I think we need to get them out to those. We're already on the radio, people have loved the ads.
Go ahead.
Oh, the other, Tom, the Recycle Coach. Okay. We have already spoken to Bill, his name is John McDonald, right?
Yep.
From Recycle Coach. And that's an app that you would have on your website, and people can download. Taylor Borough has that. The thing is, some of it is free. There's a very simplified version of it that's free. If we wanted to do more, there is a charge. Now, we've already talked to the IT department here, Jason, and he's talking to John, and seeing what we could do to get that app for the phone, Recycle Coach. Because some people, I mean, people really like those smartphones.
Well, they want to be informed, too. I mean, what we're always hearing is, is it red can day, is it green? You know, we don't know. I know Councilman Gahn talked about that in our caucus last week, that app. And I think that's something we have to look into. One more question. Do we have any idea what the percentage of property owners are actually recycling? I mean, is that something that we know? I mean, anecdotally, I could tell you, I think it's 20% for papers and maybe 30% for cans and bottles, but that's just looking at people putting things out on the street. Do we have any idea?
Do you know, Tom? We don't know, but that'd be a good study, I think, for, Tom, maybe we could, oh, maybe we should, maybe we could either follow the trucks, maybe we could take a certain, certain streets, certain days, and try to see what percentage.
Yeah, you might, I mean, you might have to just study a few neighborhoods to extrapolate that out to what it might be citywide. I'm sure there's some neighborhoods that recycle more than others, but I'm sure you could do that, at least get a baseline of what we think we're doing. Because how do we know if we're improving if we don't even know what the baseline is? Is what I'm, the point I'm trying to get.
What I can do, I mean, it would be easy to compare, as I said, to do something, to compare Scranton to some of the other towns. But again, they're very, they're a lot smaller. They're about a tenth your size. So it's hard to compare Scranton to Dunmore, as I said, Blakely, Archibald, Oliphant, you know? But we could do that to see how you're recycling, but again, you're much larger.
True, true.
But a study in the neighborhoods, right?
Well, watching the, just going through the neighborhoods, I do, riding around, you could see that the recycling is a lot better. All the plastic, not all of it, but most of it is off. You know, most of it is separate. You don't see all, what you used to see, all the garbage in it and everything. Mostly, it's cans and bottles.
When do you expect recycling to be back on time? I know for the last few weeks since this change took place, most people haven't had their recycling picked up the same day as their garbage. And what should we be telling those residents, to keep their recycling out on the curb an extra day? And I understand part of it is because DPW workers have been going through those bins. But what should we tell residents if their recycling isn't picked up on the regular day? And when do we expect it to be back on time?
I expect it to be back in this week. But with the amount of phone calls that I've had, it hasn't come back yet, not 100%. Because people are still saying, some of them are still out there with two weeks of co-mingled.
And?
And I've sent that to DPW, and they got trucks going out picking it up.
And what should we advise those residents that if their recycling isn't picked up, should they keep it on the curb?
Leave it on the curb.
Okay.
Leave it on the curb, call me. Yeah. And that's what I, that's what I would do in the last two weeks, who was answering phone calls.
Because I know mine wasn't picked up on time the last two weeks. We kept it out, and within a couple of days, it was picked out. But not everyone on the block kept theirs out. Other people brought it, brought it back in when it wasn't picked out on the regular day. So I think it's important that people know to leave it out in the, you know, on the curb if it's not picked up on its regular day, at least in the meantime, until everything gets caught up.
If it's left on the curb, it will be picked up hopefully the following day. Because they have been running a day behind the last, last week and this week. They had them working Saturday, but they're still working some of them today.
But I really think, since the brochure is good, and it is on recycle paper, just so you know, and paid for by a state grant, but that we really have to find a way to get these out, whether it's a separate mailing or, you know, again, this is just, just rewritten recently, so we didn't get them in time for the, for the taxes, but I think it's important to get them out. It really is good. And, you know, again, we will be glad to speak to the groups. Sometimes you've got to get there in person and really show people, do the show and tell, we have that, to really show them. Everybody doesn't just want to read. Oh, and we have a Spanish version also. We have a Spanish version also of the brochure.
Just to go back to what could be recycled, we touched on the co-mingle, but what about paper? So it's newspaper, office paper.
That's not, that's not being any problem right now, really. They're just taking all that as they always have.
Okay.
The center. Now, what I'm having a problem with is the DPW is supposed to be picking up yard waste the last Friday of each month, April through November. So far, it's not been picked up.
Okay.
He doesn't have the people, he doesn't have the trucks, he doesn't have the, we're without the get it all.
Can I ask, just butt in for a second? Did you, so you're saying that you, they can't pick up the yard waste, and so that program is not occurring right now?
What, the garbage?
No, the yard waste.
Yard waste.
The yard waste.
Right. So they don't have the manpower to pick it up?
Right.
Okay, now, was that, you know, was that told to the residents? Because I actually just got an email a couple of days ago from a gentleman who saw in the newspaper about the program and put his stuff out, branches and all that from the storm, and then it wasn't picked up. Now, it was picked up today because I called, but was that related to the residents that, you know, this, when is this program going to start again, or what the logistics are? Because people are under the impression that they're, they're supposed to put it out.
They were supposed to be picked up. They were supposed to be picked up. And I'm told that DPW doesn't have the people to do it.
So is it going to happen at some point, or is this just the program stopping? Because if it's stopping, I think you should put something in the newspaper to let people know, because they're under the impression that it's still occurring.
And we've been telling them it is the last Friday. It's been in the paper, right? And we've been telling people, Tom gets a lot of calls, we thought it was going to happen the last Friday, so we don't.
It just isn't. They're still going up now, picking up here and there when they're seeing it. And I don't think any of us going to the center.
So we have to talk and see when it's, I mean, we think it's going to happen. It's been in the paper, but we don't know.
Okay, that's, I'm sorry, I'm just, I, I, see, and, and I'm not blaming you two at all for this, but this is part and parcel of the problem in a way, because a program is started, and it's in the newspaper.
Yes.
And then it doesn't occur, or it just stops. And a gentleman like, who I have the email right here, goes through the trouble of, you know, cleaning his yard, and then he doesn't, he doesn't, he puts it out and it never gets picked up. So I think there's, there has to be some sort of better communication, even with the newspaper, the television about that, in my opinion.
Well, and part of our problem is, like, people don't tend to go to our website because they don't find it to be active. And I think that's a place where we need to do a better job, get these things on our website, get people used to going to our website. But I don't know, is this on our, is this on the website, by the way?
Yes, in fact, Tom and I worked with Jason. The new, the new brochure's on there. And also the letter and the form for the business recycling, saying that they must recycle, okay? And the letter talks about the city ordinance and the state law. And then there's a link on there. In fact, it's the first three things on the right. This is just brand new. It's, it's all on there.
It's all in there.
It's all on there. And it talks about, this, this week is bottles and cans. It did say co-mingle, but everybody doesn't know what co-mingle is. So we said bottles, jars and cans, and then it has a picture of the bin, and it'll say, and there, or this week is paper. So that's up to date now.
Okay. But it always, it wasn't always up to date, though.
No, no.
And that's a problem. That's a problem we have all the time, with people saying they go on the website, it's not posted, things aren't posted in time, and we're always trying to, I'm not sure what the disconnect is with that, but this kind of stuff is simple, and it's, it's too important. And what we talked about, what Councilman Gahn just talked about with the yard waste, I mean, if the DPW knows that that's not happening, then it should immediately go on the website and say, we're not doing it for this month or next month, or whatever the case may be. It's not your fault, obviously, you're not here to address that, but it's kind of frustrating that we're not getting that.
Right.
Information out there on time.
And we think it's working, right, for that last Friday? We think it is.
No.
No?
No.
I don't think it's going to work at all.
I know, I'm, well, I'm trying.
As far as the people and trucks, I truly don't think it's going to work at all.
Yeah.
So we make some kind of adjustment with people and trucks, and give Denny the people and the trucks to do it.
Well, I mean, I'll be honest with you, this whole conversation we're having, this is the first I've heard of that. I've heard, first I've heard that it's a problem with yard waste, and the first time I've heard it's a problem with people and trucks.
I didn't hear that.
I said, this is the first time I've heard there's a problem with yard waste, and the first time I've heard there's a problem with people and problem with trucks.
Well, this is the first, this is the first time that we actually tried it, and it didn't work.
Oh, okay, well, all right.
I've been getting, I've been getting calls like crazy with people. Because, you know, he was aware that it was going to be started.
Yeah.
And it was started and not done.
Okay.
This is kind of a new thing.
All right.
It's, it's, it's new. But the last thing I wanted to say is the paper, like, as Tom said, the recycling center said the paper's not a problem, you know, the newspaper, magazines, you don't get much office paper. People understand that. You don't, and corrugated cardboard is okay, the chipboard is okay, just so they take the liners out and it's clean.
And pizza boxes are okay?
They're okay, as long as it's clean, you know, and there's no liners in it. You know what I mean? Like, we don't want food in there.
Take your pizza out.
Take your pizza out, take your liner out.
If it's, if it's all, if it's all grease stuff from the pizza and stuff, it's all my garbage. Because all it's going to do is contaminate.
But from what they said to us, the paper's pretty good.
Oh, yeah, the paper's real good.
There hasn't been a problem, so we didn't really focus on making a change on that.
Have we other, has the city ever explored alternatives to the Lackawanna Recycling Center in terms of where we take our recycling?
Well, I think we have a contract with them. I'm not sure how many years is left on it. We haven't explored it. Plus and minuses are, they don't pay you, but when the market is bad like now, they always take it and they don't charge you. So there's a plus and a minus. You know, and only this, only the city could decide what's in their best interest.
Does anybody else have any questions?
First of all, thank you for coming. I appreciate both of you coming in, talking to us. First question, and I apologize because I was five minutes late, if you already answered this, but how were people notified of the changes in the recycling program?
How were people notified?
How were people notified of the changes in the recycling program? In other words, the requirements, obviously, the recycling center had changed. How were people notified that that was occurring?
This was in the newspaper.
Okay.
Okay. And the changes weren't that drastic, really. I mean, except for the recycling center. It was in newspaper, it was, it's on the radio, exactly what they will and won't take.
Okay.
It's on the website.
It was, it was on the, it was on the TV, when I was on the TV, and I told them exactly what they will and won't take. So I've covered TV, I've covered radio, and I've covered newspaper.
Okay. And what is the, or is there a policy? So a DPW worker arrives at somebody's house and, on their recycling truck, and they go, obviously, they're, they're now going through the, the can. What is the policy? The, the things that, if there's one thing that doesn't belong, they don't take anything? Is that how it works?
They have been taking whatever's in it out that doesn't go, and leaving it, and taking the rest of it.
Okay, and then where do they put, what they take out, where do they put the things that don't belong?
They're supposed to put it back on the can after they empty it.
Okay. Because I, I don't know about everybody else, but I have been getting some complaints that some of that stuff is going in people's yards, just so you're aware of that.
That's not supposed to happen.
I've also got some complaints, too, where if there's one thing in there that's not acceptable, they just won't take the full can.
Just so you, I mean, just so you're aware of that.
We've also, we've also set up with the loaders of the recyclers, of the recycling team, had a meeting with them, and told them, you know, what's in it, what's, what can be taken, what can't be taken, what to do if there's something not in it, put it back in the can after it's emptied, and so on.
Yeah, and that's what they should be doing, taking everything that goes into the truck, everything else goes back in the can.
Go back in the can.
Not on the sidewalk, down, that's what was happening, by the way, the first time this happened. They were just, it was all over people's yards and all over sidewalks.
And after a couple of weeks, people should learn, and I was guilty of it as well, I had salad containers from Garrity's in mine, which I thought they were recycled because they were taken for years. And obviously, when it was left in my can, I know that that goes in the garbage now. So hopefully, that, that's worked, but they haven't been getting to everyone. And I know that's not your fault, you know, that's on the DPW, that it's been, you know, so far behind for multiple weeks now.
Oh, this is one other thing that we're doing. Tom and I talked to, to Denny and to the folks over in the DPW. The new recycling containers are going to have in the arrow, you know, plastic bottles, plastic jars and cans. So it's going to be right on there.
They're going to tell them exactly what can go in there. It's right going to be on the outside of the can. Instead of the recycling logo and stuff, it's going to tell them exactly what can go in there.
So we added that to the next container.
Have we ever explored getting tops for the containers?
What's that?
Have we ever explored getting tops for the containers? Because I know sometimes, like, when the cans go out and the wind blows, you know, they'll blow all over the place, and then they're all over the neighborhood.
Can we get tops for them?
Because I know there are some municipalities that have tops on their recycling, so it doesn't blow away.
We could, we will look into that, and the next grant round, we couldn't go this time. You go every other year, next year, we'll go again for a large amount of money for the containers, and we'll look into the tops. We'll see how much they cost. And again, the state did pay for the printing of these. They don't pay for mailing, as I said, and distribution, and they paid for the radio ads. We still have more, and they paid for the newspaper. It's all reimbursed. You know, you pay for it, and then you send in the grant, and it gets reimbursed.
Okay. As part, I was looking back at, I think you were hired first in 2015, correct?
Right, I think so.
So I was looking at some of the, you know, things, some of the goals, I guess, that not only you had, but the city as a whole in the recycling program. So can you just tell us, has commercial recycling in the city increased, and if so, how much since 2015?
I'd have to look at that. I don't know how much it has increased. But I know we've worked a lot with the downtown businesses. We got a list together, right, Tom? We got better addresses. We didn't have those at first, believe it or not. There weren't a real good list of commercial addresses.
We're still fighting that. It's still a fight. That's still a fight even this year for me to get through the direction.
To get what?
To get the addresses of all the companies.
Okay.
We have better addresses. We have better addresses, we also worked with Scranton tomorrow on getting better addresses. We've walked the downtown, giving the form, which is on the website, by the way, the letter and the, and the reporting form, we gave them to the businesses, but a lot of the landlords either wrote the recycling out of the contract, or they may be out of the area, so we still need to get a little more from the downtown businesses, that still needs to be done.
The reason they don't wanna do it is because, like I've talked to Russo, and his man, he has a lot of businesses, Granton, and I asked him if he recycles them, he said no, and I said why? Costs too much money. Cause every time he's gotta recycle, he's gotta get a dumpster at the place he's recycling for, and they just don't wanna do it.
But it is mandated by the state, correct? And in our ordinance?
Yes.
They'd be violating the ordinance if they didn't recycle?
And you know, I don't wanna go around giving people citations of tickets for garbage and stuff like that.
Yeah, my only point there is, I mean, if we're, if we're serious about it.
Right.
You know, if we're not gonna, just like with the garbage fee and everything else, if we're not gonna enforce it, I mean, I appreciate your efforts, and I do think you are, you know, trying your best, but if, again, if there's no teeth, just like the example that you just gave, it's gonna be, you know, you're just gonna be running around in circles, in my opinion.
We have, right, and we have gotten a better response, what I will do, what we'll do, let's look at it together, give us a couple of weeks, you know, maybe a month, we'll look at how many more we have had responded over the past year or so than what we had before, we could look at the numbers.
Yeah, I would like to see that only because, as I said, one of the goals a couple of years ago was
Yes.
Increasing the yearly reporting from commercial establishments, right?
Right.
And again, I don't know if you have these numbers in front of you, but do you know if residential leaf and yard waste collection has increased?
It hasn't increased yet.
It has not increased?
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
No.
How are we comparing, and again, I don't know if you have these figures, but how are we comparing as a city to other municipalities across the state as it relates to recycling tonnages and the 904 grant amounts?
In terms of something like yard waste, we're lagging far behind.
Okay.
Okay, that's really got to get started. I can ask the state and find out, compare us to some of the others in terms of 904s, that will take a little bit of time, but I can get, you know, Allentown, or Redding, or Erie, and look at the 904s. I could certainly take some time, I will maybe have that for you within a month, it's gonna take some time, cause then I have to go to DEP if I could get that, it is public information. What's tough with Scranton, that's very different, we have to see what we're comparing. Scranton doesn't have a lot of the big generators in the city. I'm not making any, trying to make any comparison, but we have apartments, you know, the university doing a great job, great job, the hospitals seem to be doing well. But your biggest businesses, for example, Amazon, huge, is in Covington Township, some of the big warehouses are in Jessup, so again, we don't have some of those big, big generators. Again, some of those big ones are in the outlying areas, so we'd have to, you know, we have to see what we're comparing to, so I'll try to see what I can do there, Tom, I'll see what I can do.
Okay, back in August of 2014, I believe, you, you had a meeting along with the city with the Department of Environmental Protection, Regional Recycling Coordinator, just to discuss some of the program deficiencies at that point, a few years ago. So fast forward now to 2019, I believe you've been with the city every year.
Right.
Where are we in terms of program deficiencies? Can you give us a step back and give us an overall picture of where we were back in 2014, how far we've come, maybe how far we haven't come, and what still needs to occur?
I think the state is very, very glad that there's a recycling coordinator, that Tom is here. The state's really glad to see a recycling coordinator, they were thrilled with that. I think they're real happy with the education, they're happy so far, they want us to continue, they like the brochure, and again, this is real similar to Lackawanna County's, it's just a little glitzier than the one that Lackawanna County has. I think they like we're working with the recycling center, they like that we went for radio ads, TV, more education than what we had before. They like that we're working with the businesses, and the person you could talk to, he's in Wilkes-Barre, he's Barrett Case, he's the regional coordinator, I think he was quite I think we have a little way to go with the yard waste, but we, we are starting, and that was one of the requirements, that we did have to have a yard waste collection.
That was Barrett's main objective, is to get that yard waste.
And when you say that we have a ways to go, like?
With yard waste?
Yeah, could you just be more specific as to what exactly, you know?
We've got a long way to go, we've gotta get it picked up first off.
Right, what the state requirement is with yard waste, is that you have to have curbside collection, if you're a mandated community, which Scranton is, over 5,000 people, you have to have it at least once a month during leaf and yard waste season.
Okay.
So they're not talking about the winter, but they're talking about leaf and yard waste season, you're supposed to have it once a month. Now, you know, a lot of these little communities have it every week, but again, we're a city, but you have to have it once a month, so, you know, and it has to be at the curb, so that's something which is a state requirement, once a month at the curb during leaf and yard waste season, which is pretty much what, April through, you know, November.
And what are the requirements for the bundling and bagging of the yard waste? Cause I get that question quite often. What are the requirements by the residents?
Excuse me?
What are the requirements by the residents to bundle and bag that yard waste so it will be collected?
We have the bags that we give them, and they can bundle their, their long, the three-foot pieces, not know what, twitches around.
Okay, so yard waste in the brown bags that we use for the leaves, the same types
of bags, and then any kind of trimmings, two-inch diameter, three-foot long sections, and you want those tied together, bundled together? Is there a certain type of bundling?
No, just string.
String or anything?
I wouldn't use clothesline or something, just any twine.
Okay.
Anything that's not metal, because of course, remember, it's gonna go through a grinder.
Any non-metal, okay.
Right, 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 not plastic, you know, things, a twine, the yard bags, the city has them, that we give them the yard bags, or they could go to Lowe's, Home Depot, any place and get those bags, they can put it out in a container and they'll dump it.
If I recall, last year, we did it once.
We haven't?
That's all I remember, having it done once, in December, I think it was, and we're supposed to be doing it from April till probably November, December, so we have a long ways to go.
That's, that's the same.
And the problem is, as Tom mentioned before, the first thing that got cut now was yard waste.
Right.
So we're trying to implement a program, trying to get it up to state levels, and we're cutting it before we even get started, so, you know, we do have a long way to go on yard waste.
We have a long way to go with the yard waste.
Our city clerk just gave me a wave that we're running out of time.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I know a bunch of us have some additional questions, we didn't get to ask, if it's okay with you if we submit those, and if you can get us a reply, especially on, I know Councilman Gahn asked some regarding specific numbers, so we appreciate you coming in to give us an update on where things stand, and, you know, my final thoughts to the residents would just be to continue to recycle, because it is a very important program, so we thank you for coming in, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
And I'll find, give me about a couple of weeks to a month to get all those, cause I need to get them from the state.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna take a five-minute break, then we'll be back out for our regular meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. By this meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the honorable and righteous citizens, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and for all of those who have passed away in our community.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A Agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting to be held May 8, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them filed.
3B Tax Assessors Report, four hearing day to be held, May 8, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them filed.
3C Agenda for the City Planning Commission Special Meeting to be held, May 1, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time? I have one announcement, next Monday, May 6, at 5:15 PM, we will hold a public caucus with members of NDC regarding the city's parking system, they will present their quarterly update to council. Anyone else?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Les Spinler.
Evening, Councilor Les Spinler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. I had a suggestion to the recycle coordinator, which she said they're already doing, I suggested they should put people on work release at the recycle center, and sort all the cans and bottles, whatever, she said they're already doing that, which I was unaware of, so, I think that's a good idea, but she said there's only so much they can do, I mean, there's probably tons and tons of stuff that they have to go through. But his flyer is very informative, so I think there should be a way to get it to every resident in the city, it's very helpful. Moving on, a few times I spoke about the water buildup on Dorothy Street by the baseball fields and the playgrounds, Councilman Perry last week said he was gonna look into it, what there was, by the basketball courts, the tennis courts, there's a cutout, like if it was for handicap accessible, and I noticed, didn't even realize, I go by there all the time, there's another one in front of the basketball courts, and that's why the water is coming right up onto the sidewalk. Now, why those cutouts are there, I have no idea, cause it's, it's not a corner where it should be handicap accessible, so.
Yeah, I don't think we heard back, Mr. Perry, we didn't hear back from DPW, did we on that issue on Dorothy Street with that, the water from the missing curb area?
I heard it was a bad line.
Okay, no, we haven't heard back, but I'll do a follow-up on it and see where it is.
All right, thank you. Lastly, I go up and down Mulberry Street a lot, at the corner of Mulberry and Jefferson, if you're driving up towards University of Scranton, there's three lanes, a right-hand turning lane, a straight lane, and a left-hand turning lane. Everybody in the left-hand turning lane pulls right up to the line, right up to the corner. Eighteen-wheelers can't make the turn, everybody has to back up. Pendot should have put a line back further.
There was a line back further, what happened was, there was a patch that was done, and they never went back to replace the line, so we'll send a letter to Pendot to get that.
Well, there is a line, but it's right up to the corner.
No, no, there was a line well before that, like maybe forty feet back, yeah, yeah.
Happens all the time, people have to back, and if there's a lot of cars.
I know, they're backing all the way back to Linda Street, absolutely.
I mean, they should know that, if you're any kind of a good driver, you should know not to pull right up to the corner there, but
I know.
A lot of people don't know it. That's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Joan Hodawanitz?
Joan Hodawanitz, city resident and taxpayer. The Stormwater Authority, has anybody heard anything about decisions being made within the administration? We're only 185 days from October 31st, which is when the MS-4 permit will expire, so I, hopefully, they're gonna make a decision and move forward, you know, promptly, and not allow ourselves to get into trouble over that MS-4 permit. So if there's anything you know, please tell us during fifth order. Last week, a gentleman spoke, he said he was with the Green Party, and among other things, he made a comment which bothered me, he said words to the effect that the police department was demonizing people who used recreational marijuana. And I take offense at that, because all our police department is doing is the jobs they were sworn to do, they enforce the law. If he wants to see marijuana laws changed, and legalizing recreational marijuana, that is a job for legislators, it is not up to the police to decide which laws to enforce and which ones not to enforce, and so they're not demonizing anybody, they're doing the job we hire them to do, and they do it very well, by the way. In the paper on the 27th was a story about settling contractors sued costs city $245,000. And in the article, it comes to light that the insurance company denied the city's claim, so the $245,000 is coming out of, I guess, general funds. And city solicitor Jessica Esgra did not explain why coverage was denied. I think that the taxpayers of the city have a right to know why the insurance company denied coverage, and are we going to impede that? Are we just going to cough up $245,000?
I agree, I would assume it was because it was a civil rights suit, and it wouldn't be covered by insurance.
Well.
I asked Ms. Hodawanitz, I asked actually this morning for clarification on that, and then what line item, I would assume it's contingency, but I'm not sure.
Well, the point is, I would like to know why it wasn't covered, cause that's why we have insurance to cover, you know, cover us on liability from claims, and if, you know, and if it's a civil rights type action, well then, just say, this is why it's not covered under the contract, I mean, you know, by not saying why it's not covered, you know, we're left to wonder, and that's not good, cause it's a lot of money. I don't really wanna steal his thunder, but I will. Chris Kelly told me earlier today that Larry Bond got fired from his law firm, isn't that nice? Yay, the times, they do good work, you know, you can, you know, but on the other hand, they don't have a lot of work to do, all they have to do is turn over a rock and there's a new scandal. Speaking of scandals, are we still thinking about possibly replacing Northeast Revenue Services as our collection agency? Is that something that maybe the administration's, are they just gonna, you know, go on and on like Rainy and Rainy? You know?
So I think they should look at it every year, so.
Well, I think so too, but I will tell you this, maybe what you ought to do is have an army of concerned citizens who could become tax deadbeat bounty hunters, okay? And every time they find somebody, report somebody hasn't paid a fee or a tax, you know, anything that gets collected, give them 1%. You make a good living in this neck of the woods, there are so many people, you know, not paying their fair share, but, you know, in talking to Chris, you know, one of the things that you worry about is, suppose you're a cancer doctor, an oncologist, and you make pretty good money as an oncologist, do you really want someone to find a cure for cancer? Well, Northeast Revenue is in much the same position, they have a vested interest in there being a lot of delinquencies, so you could stretch it out, and you can stretch it out. I think that if we're gonna have people collecting delinquencies, they should be paid employees of the city, and that should be their job, and they should get bonuses for the number of people and the amount of money they bring in, and get rid of the middle man. Thank you.
Thank you. Fay Ferranas?
Fay Ferranas, Scranton, I wanted to bring up a couple articles. If anybody didn't see the Volpe Report on Sunday, it's also gonna be part two next Sunday at 11:30 on Fox, Chris Kelly was on, and he talked about everything that you're very much interested in the city, and it was wonderful, and he had a fabulous article in the Scranton Times yesterday about the nineteen delinquents of the man that Joan just mentioned that's got fired from New York City Law Firm. I don't know if you've thought about anymore what you're gonna do about this garbage, but Mr. Gahn, I appreciate the fact last week that you mentioned that you're in favor of leaving the garbage if people do not pay, I think that's a strong incentive. Again, like I said, why should we continue to pay when our neighbors aren't? So I hope that you're gonna do something about this, and letting it, instead of letting it go, like Mr. Kelly said, cause you're enabling these people, I don't mean you, Mr. Gahn, I mean council in general, is enabling these people by not doing something, I know the mayor has to, but you have to get on his back. Do you know, Mr. Gahn, if the letter was sent to Mayor Courtright last week about enforcing this law that was passed by the city, the administrative code?
I believe, I don't know.
You asked for it to be written, was it?
Oh, the letter that I requested was sent to the mayor, yes.
To enforce this law?
I can't, I don't remember the specifics of it, whatever I had requested last week.
You were talking about enforcing the law that we have about leaving the garbage out, and you said he, the city is the one that you can't, but the city is the one that has to administer it, so that's what you're asking, to see if people do it, so that's what I want an answer on, if, so if you could clarify that more, I'd appreciate it. Now, Mr. Evans, last week, you mentioned about a possible solution, I'm not saying you favor it or don't, but you mentioned it, about per bag. Well, some people are in favor, but the more I read about it, the more I, I'm a senior citizen, I only have a couple of bags a week, but what you're forgetting to tell the people is, there's a fee of $250, plus $2 a bag, the first two weeks you get, the first two bags a week you get free, but any bags after that are $2 a week.
Where did you get that information?
Pardon me?
Where did you get that information?
From the pamphlet that the city has, $250 plus $2 a bag after the first two bags, that's one plan.
Well, that would be, that would not be my plan, that's for sure.
Well, that's a, that's a city plan, okay? And then the other option was $175 a year, plus a dollar a bag, those are the two options. So some of those plans, some people with families would be paying four, five, $600 a year with the per bag, so forget that.
Well, I would never support those plans, so go on.
Well, okay, but you were saying last week about per bag.
I was throwing out the options of what could be done.
Those options are no good.
But if you wanna know what I really believe, I believe, if you wanna know what I really believe, I believe that the garbage fee should be back embedded into the taxes, period.
Well, I think the garbage fee should be lowered.
Well, it should be.
If you put it in the property taxes, how are we supposed to know how much we're paying for the garbage fee? I mean, how would we know?
That's how, that's always done, it was done that way before the fee.
No, but how will we know how much we're paying for the garbage fee?
Well, that's what has to be decided at that point, but it has to be lower than it is now, absolutely.
Yeah, and we'd have to know if that's what we're.
Well, you will know, it'll be based on the mileage rate.
Okay, suppose somebody pays their garbage fee in their property tax, like say next year, hypothetically, it was next year, they pay their garbage fee, cause it's in their property tax, but all those delinquents from the years past, for these same people, how will you go about getting that delinquent money back from them, even though they're starting next, with the property tax from forth, going forward?
That doesn't go away, they continue to go after that money.
How, that's what I'm saying, you should stop.
Well, that's the million-dollar question, isn't it? How do we get it?
Well, not really, it's not the million-dollar question, you stopped picking up the garbage, just like these recyclables, they sure stopped picking up the recyclables very quickly, didn't they?
Well, again, that's to be discussed, I don't disagree with that.
Well, how many weeks do we have to discuss this?
Well, first off, we have to find out what it's gonna cost to embed the garbage fee into the taxes, and make sure it's equitable.
No, I'm not talking about the property tax, Mr. Evans, I'm talking about not picking up the garbage, not talking about the property tax, that's, that's to be decided.
Well, I'm curious to see what the mayor has to say about it, so we'll see what he has to say.
Well, but this is what I want you to do, to find out from the mayor.
Well, we are, Councilman Gahn sent a letter, we're gonna find out what the mayor has to say.
Okay, so let's stay on top of that.
Absolutely, I'm curious to see what the mayor has to say, absolutely.
Now, did you get that information I asked you last week about?
No, I've been playing phone tag with the administration, so I'll continue to do that, but I haven't connected with them yet.
You didn't connect with them yet?
No, I have not connected with them yet.
Well, last week, Marie Schumacher, and the week before, she came in front of council with five minutes each week of reading all the transcripts from the minutes of city council, of all the questions she's asked of you mostly, Mr. Evans, and all the times that there was no answer for five years. So this is why the minutes that the public people speak, the public input should be transcribed. Mr. Gahn, you had mentioned a while ago that they're already transcribing the backlog for certain things. Isn't there, could you mention in motions, please, if it's possible to get those people to transcribe these minutes again? Because I do not believe it has anything to do with money. I think it has everything to do with not wanting the people to know what you say back to us and what we say to you, because you don't want the people to know that you never answer our questions. So, Mr. Gahn, would you please address that in motions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Marie Schumacher. When I saw the front page of the paper today, I was rather distressed. Can you tell me what the four bids were of those people that were mentioned, that bid on the connectability, as it's called?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
How, what were the bids?
I don't know, I haven't seen them yet.
Anybody?
It was an RFQ, it wasn't a bid, it was an RFQ.
How much is, how much is there in the budget to?
I'd have to check with Mr. Bozoni, but I think they're, what happens now is they choose several to talk to, and they negotiate the price and see if it works to the benefit of the city. So.
For?
For the study. But I don't know what the amount is. I don't think they told them what the amount is at this point.
Well, they had to bid something that's.
Well, they were, no, it was a request for qualifications, is what they did at this point.
Okay, I, you know, I just wonder if we're, if we're trying to ride a dead horse here. There's so many loose strings out there, and I would really like to see some common priorities. Like, what are your top three? You know, look at how many things are out there. Stormwater. And I think that's what, that's what upset me that the most. I mean, downtown reminds me of, actually, of a small person that wants everything that they see, especially around Christmas. But, you know, do you want it, or do you need it? And I think this city has an awful lot of needs. Kaiser Valley, hopefully we'll hear, did, did you get anything on, on the fix that is, was proposed?
Yeah, Mr. Poses did send us something. I can read what he said in Fifth.
In Fifth, okay, thank you. Is it a go?
It's on the list to be done.
Okay. Well, that's some progress. But also, I mean, it was just a few short days ago, I think the 26th, that I was looking at, at videos that people had posted on the East Mountain, and the rivers that were coming down. There were no streets, there were rivers, and, and the water keeps flowing. We need that. East Mountain has, at least the, the one side has one, one park, a lot of people. Downtown has, how many parks already? 500 Lackawanna Avenue, has anybody ever checked to see how much that's used? How many people go there?
I've used it.
And how many people were there when you were there?
There were a few people there when I'm there, yeah, but I'm not sure if it's used as much as it should be.
Okay, you've got the courthouse, now a block away, they're getting that, they're getting one down at the, at the gas, the old gas company down there. You know, to me, that's a little bit excessive for the number of people that are here. This study, I mean, people on, on the mountains, I don't know about West Side as much as I do East Mountain, and I don't know how, how they were allowed to build houses without putting in sidewalks. But there are a lot of streets that are very narrow, you know. I told you before many times, I pushed a wheelchair for five years, and it's not a lot of fun going out into the street every place. And we don't even have sidewalks. The streets are a total mess. I thought about buying a new car, but I, no way, not with the way the streets are. So we've got stormwater, we've got that. And when are you going to give an update on all of those action items from the exit plan? How many of them have been accomplished, and how many haven't? Could we get a?
I asked for that, and never received a response.
Yeah. Well, and I provided that sheet, and I'll, I'll bring it again maybe next week and ask you to fill it out. I mean, there's so much that, and I really am, I really believe what you need to do on the trash is to do exactly what is stated in the, in the code. And that is, do not pick up garbage from a home, or whatever that has not paid their bill. And then, you know, I, I think a pile of garbage in front of a house would be a lot, affect my quality of life, a lot more than somebody who's got a stuffed chair. So, I mean, I would really like you guys to establish the top three in a schedule for when you're going to address them. They keep, you know, things come and go. I read, two weeks, five years ago, this exact same thing happened, and what was done? Zip. We need to get our act together and start getting some actions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'll try and be brief. I only have three things that I'd like to deal with. Last I was here, I mentioned that I thought there was potentiality of voter fraud in the last election. I will tell you that I have gotten probably the most interest from people who have approached me, asking me for specifics. I have not as yet given that information to anyone. However, people have given me information. Things that I did not have, but I was seeking when I did that work. I now have some video evidence. So what I'd like to do is to thank the people who are watching tonight, people who are sending me information. I'm no longer looking for those issues that are civil, I'm looking for things that are criminal. So whatever anybody has, I will accept. Another issue. I partly came here tonight because of two issues. One, Chris Kelly's article, who I believe has the best interest of the city and the county, and, and actions of Mr. Hinton. I have long trashed Mr. Hinton for failure to adhere to and enforce the zoning and housing regulations. I started on my crusade in 2014 because nobody was doing it. Mr. Hinton decided to do it after five years. Mr. Kelly's article mentions that there's a prominent out-of-town lawyer. My dispute was a local, local prominent lawyer. The out-of-town lawyer didn't pay his taxes. We have the same issue with the local guy. I can't tell you why, I can't tell you why the city ignored it. I can only tell you that it in fact happened, and somebody swore under oath that they did not know that they had to file taxes with the city. Maybe they didn't. But that struck me, what Mr. Hinton did after five years. So what I'd like to do tonight, and I'll follow up in a letter, I promised that I made to Jason Shrive when he was solicitor, and when he was the executive director of the Sewer Authority. I promised Jason Shrive that when the city started to enforce its regulations, that I would start, not only to pull back, but I would start to help the city. Now, with that said, I'm only going to fulfill part of my promise, because the city still has not fully fixed my problem. But the trash fees, the rental registration fees, the mercantile tax, what I'm finding is that the city is running off to a magistrate, and they're, they're putting liens. Well, I'll tell you what, that's really great. I get a first-year person out of law school to do that. But maybe what the city, maybe in conjunction with, depending on the individual, should consider going to the court of common pleas, actually do some legal work. Sue the individual. Bring them into Lackawanna County, or the people that are in Lackawanna County, bring them in. Go after them. Because if you sue them, and you're successful in the suit, which I think you might be, here's the tax, didn't pay it, not a lot of defense to something like that. Well, then I'd say you're successful. Then you have to do some of the heavy lifting. That means go after their bank accounts, find out where they are, and freeze them. Actually go after the money. Now, that's Plan A. Plan B would be bundle every single one of the delinquent accounts that have been out there for years, and sell them. You're not getting anything right now, but you might be able to get something. It'll be at a discount, negotiable, you determine what you can live with, but bundle them and sell them. Why sit on receivables that in all likelihood are never going to get paid, because nobody is truly pursuing them? Now, I have nobody in mind. I'm sure you guys can go out, but I would not ask anybody locally. I'd look outside the area. Look at somebody who's actually done something like that before. So with that, gentlemen, I'm going home to have dinner with my wife. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Good evening, Council Lee Morgan. The first thing I have here today is that I agree that the garbage fee should be rolled into the city taxes. No doubt about that at all. But I really think in the city, we need to have a different discussion. And that is, you know, everybody's calling somebody a, you know, a deadbeat, or a slacker, or somebody's not paying their share. And I think it's time to look at the amount of tax per person that every resident is paying in this city. Take a look at the city budget, see how big it is, to a comparable city. And I think that if our budget's high, we need to cut it. We need to start cutting, no matter what the consequences are. You know, people come up here and talk about the roads, the bridges, city's infrastructure. The city never invests in itself. It always wants a grant, or a funding stream that the city itself doesn't put up. Think it's wrong. Think the city needs to fund its own projects. I think that a lot of the money that's come into the city in funding for projects has been wasted. The results just aren't there. I think we need to take a look at just a host of a lot of problems this city has, including the funding stream for the Scranton School District. I think that that's an issue that every councilman should be interested in, not just school board members. You know, because I think the council has a role to play. But you know what that role is? That role is to start lobbying state representatives and state, and the state senator, and call them out on the mat. Not just the school board, but the city's government, because these children are, you know, they're, they're just, they should be receiving a public education, and it should be important enough to this council to make sure that this, this city's government is protecting their interest. And calling all the people that are forward, that should be working for all of us. You know, the things that's happened to the Scranton pools, the city pools is ridiculous. Never should have happened. I mean, the pool down on Capous Avenue has been closed for probably a decade or more. All the other ones, I mean, what obligation does the city actually have for public safety? It's a real good question to ask. The other question we have is, you know, we have people talking about not picking up people's garbage. I don't know, I think that'd cause a health hazard. I think that if the city decided it wasn't going to pick up somebody's garbage that lived on the block I lived on, I think that somebody should come and sue the city. Because it's your obligation to protect my interest. I just think that really the city has failed in almost every aspect of governance. That's why I totally and 100% wholeheartedly believe that we have to move away from a council, mayor, form a government in this city, and hire a manager to look after the best interest of the residents. And as far as all the, even on today's agenda, all the grant money flowing into the city, everything, it's just passing through. But there's no interest in the public record, because the residents of this city, you can tell by the amount of people who come here, they have no faith in their government. And when you watch these meetings, and you watch people who come here and talk about an issue for a decade or two decades, nothing's resolved. Not even patching the streets and cars, they're $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 a piece. And you're going through six- or eight-inch potholes, and they're all over the city. You know, a city that was proactive would cut costs. It'd have money put aside for emergencies, and it wouldn't have its hand out to state and federal government continually, just never ends. And the money that comes here, we don't even make sure it's well spent. So I mean, look at all the residents in this city, and people I've known who've come here. A gentleman that I work with said the other day, "I'm paying $200 a month for my water and my sewer to raise my family in that city. Is there somebody out of their mind in that city? How can you afford to live in that city?" I mean, and here's a guy that's making $100,000 a year, and he's complaining about it. So imagine how the person who's making $10 an hour, with all these fees and all these costs that this government has created by its own actions, has made it almost impossible for people to live here, and you're just, don't even consider it. Troubling.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dodson. I caught ECTV finally. Hopefully, that's the end of that, with no ECTV on public television. I pay for it every month with my fees to Comcast, and I certainly hope that they get the money that they're promised in that contract. Not now, not a month next, or nine months next Tuesday. Okay, has any momentum been for a grant for the restoration of City Hall? Now, we have the firehouse to also consider if there was a move scenario, and it's an infomniary with me. I want City Hall to stay in City Hall, and that's all there is to it. On the recycling, I would be in favor of some fines for people. They don't recycle, or they throw everything in a common barrel and expect recyclers to take it out. Last Saturday, they removed the non-recyclables from the recycle barrels. Mine wasn't one of them, the whole barrel went. And they blew around the street. We had a storm. Somebody saw the, saw the value of sweeping off the front of their lot, and, or their house, and dumped the remains on, on my lot adjacent to my house. You know, it, it just gets, why can't they have a bag? I don't know. But personally, I don't think that people that aren't paying the $270 or $300 a year are really going to pay for a per bag. They're just going to take it out and throw it. I've been unable to ride my bike along the old Erie Line up there on East Mountain. But when I was, I seen pickup trucks with mattresses, tires, you name it, goes back in the woods, and there it's dumped. I actually, the one time I finally decided to carry a pencil and paper so I could take down license plates. so I could take down license plates, if I seen it. Years back, I mentioned over the bridge over 307, there's a pile of construction waste, old shingles, old boards, everything, right by the bridge going over 307, up towards East Mountain. So people, unless their trash is taken out, free or otherwise, some people will just dump it. And I'm sick and tired of coming up here and spending all my time on this. It's been probably 50 times already I've spoken about trash removal. So per bag is not an option, and furthermore, when I keep hearing silly ideas that people have and keep getting considered, if they get enacted, I'm going to have a hard time writing anything at the bottom of that ballot, except none of the above. I've done it before. When I see a one-horse race, and I don't like the person, that's what gets written in, none of the above. I really can't see voting any other way anymore. I'll watch out for the good guy, and make sure I know him, but please be on your better behavior. And furthermore, if City Hall has to be renovated, and we have taxed delinquent business properties in the city, in the nearby vicinity, then how about if they lend us some space while we move an office over there? That was an idea of mine, that I just thought of one night. Gee, you know, maybe the place across the street isn't paying taxes right now, and we could take it out and trade. That'd be a great idea, I think. And when you're elected, I feel that it's to make existing systems work. That's the point. You get elected to uphold the Constitution, or the laws, or whatever, and if you can come up with something better, but a bunch of trash on my front lawn that somebody else generated is not the answer. And I put up with it for 22 years in other cities. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Council. My name is Kathleen Madsen, and I am here representing the Southside Neighborhood Association. With the recent news, and the headlines stating that we have a gentleman that owes a quarter of a million dollars to the city of Scranton, he also owns a couple of properties, at least one in particular, 616 Cedar Avenue, over in Southside. My counterpart, Chrissy, she's going to talk about the specifics of that building. But as the neighborhood group, our number one complaint is absentee and neglect for landlords and property owners in this city. Blight is the biggest concern. Mr. Bond is right now the example of why and what causes our neighborhood groups to actually have to form. It's because of neighbors like him and others that either don't pay their taxes, don't pay their garbage fees, don't take care of their property, they just let it go. And because of that, crime increases, property values decrease, and it's really a negative impact on the attitude of the whole neighborhood. And it needs to stop. It's time for Scranton to finally enact some kind of new policies, and to be proactive, as opposed to reactive, and to try and get us on the right track. I don't think that anyone should be able to come into this city, buy a property, sell a property, or even a resident that lives here. They should not be able to do any kind of city transactions, whether it be permits, certificates, get a job in our city council, or, not our council, in our city employments, and they just shouldn't be able to do anything unless they're square with the city. If you're already employed here, you should have to get on a path to be square again. But there has to be a way that people who are delinquent are stopped at the door, that they know that Scranton residents that are struggling to pay all their bills, that are square with the city, they need to know that the other folks that are slacking are being taken care of, and are making to be right with the city. So we're here today to ask you, our primary concern is 616 Cedar Avenue. That building owned by Mr. Bond is in decrepit condition. I forwarded information to Councilman Donahue today. There's photographs. I do have copies of that, if you'd like to see them. We have 27 residents, Chrissy's going to go over this with you. But there's a lot of importance that this property gets taken care of immediately. So we ask you to do what you can, what you're legally allowed to do, to kind of take care of that property for us. And also, moving forward, to figure out a way to prevent this from happening to us taxpaying residents.
Kathleen, has anybody talked to Mr. Hinton, or anybody from Licensing and Inspection, to find out why that hasn't been taken down?
No.
Okay, just curious if anybody had heard from him?
I haven't. I don't know of anybody, and I did not contact him directly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chrissy Manuel, and I'm the Southside Revitalization Manager. I work for United Neighborhood Centers. My office is at 631 Cedar Avenue, and we work pretty across from the 616 Cedar Avenue building. This building, just for some context, it's the largest property on the 600 block of Cedar Avenue. It's the only three-story building. All the other buildings are one and two stories. It's in the middle of an area that has seen major revitalization in the last 10 years, from local funds, state funds, and federal funds, from United Neighborhood Center, who put millions of dollars into renovating that block, as well as private property owners. We feel that this blight is increasing the crime potential on the street, and that it's a major safety concern, a public health concern, and specifically, a fire hazard to the two buildings that are adjacent to it, where people live. There was a fire in the building last year. The back of the building is all blown out. There is a huge, like bonfire-sized wood pile, where there are rodents living in behind it. The windows in the front are blown out, and we have put in complaints to the Lips Department. They've come in, and they've done some cleanup, but, I mean, just to the exterior, just cleaning up some of the junk. But the building, to us, appears to be in disrepair. So we have a letter here to support the emergency demolition of the building, if you would consider it. We have about 35 residents who signed it, including all of the property owners in those couple blocks, all of the business owners that operate on that block, and some of the side streets as well. And we also have a letter from the CEO, Lisa Durkin of UNC, just saying that UNC, being the largest property owner on the block, does support the emergency demolition, and feels like it would be a positive step for the community. So we appreciate you hearing this, hearing this out, and I have all this information. We did pass it on to Kyle as well.
All right, good. I'm sure we'll all sign on to that, or at least send a letter from ourselves to Licensing and Inspection. I'm just not sure why it's not torn down. I've been pressing for a new demolition policy, since I've been on City Council, that takes into consideration buildings like that, because what we have to look at is the criteria of why we're tearing down buildings. And what we do now is, basically, it's the first one in, first one out. When you have buildings like that, they should step over other not-so-important buildings. I know everybody thinks the building next to them is important, but there's a whole economic engine driving down Cedar Avenue right now, and that's a very, very critical piece of property.
It does.
So I totally agree. So hopefully, we can help to do something, but, you know, again, we don't have the last say in that, but we will certainly put our stamp on trying to get that building down.
Right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Hi, Barbara Malley, 638 Wheeler Avenue. I'm here about Mr. Bond, the, not necessarily about Mr. Bond. He seems to have been taking care of a quick response from his employers in New York, and whatever happens to him, he deserves. I think one of my biggest concerns is leadership in the city. And I'm not here to lay blame on anyone on council. I'm wondering what the stance of the mayor is. I believe it's the mayor who is responsible for the implementation of the licensing office. I think that he is Mr. Hinton's direct supervisor, if I'm correct. If I'm incorrect, let me know that. In the article in the paper that Chris Kelly wrote, Mr. Hinton said he was frustrated that this has existed, the situation on Wheeler Avenue with the burned-out building has existed, since the first time I contacted him was in June of 2015. So to say he shares my frustration, I think is unacceptable. I did what I was supposed to as a citizen. I contacted the representative of my local government, whose job responsibility is zoning and enforcement. So we're not on the same plane, you know, frustrated, frustrated, isn't that nice? This is his job, and if he doesn't have the tools or the capacity to do his job, I mean, then, as your job, I think, I guess it is to look and see, do you need to put more money? Do they need more people there? As Kathleen says, prevention is the key. Just being reacting to all these things, I mean, how did 19 properties, and nine of them, or 10 of them are already, you know, condemned? So, again, what I'm asking for is leadership on every single level of this government, starting with the mayor. That's where I think it needs to start. And then, I think, whatever support, whatever ideas you have to offer across the board, is the only thing that we can hope on to get us out of this situation. So I appreciate anything that can be done moving forward, and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Good evening, Council Kara Sightzinger, City of Scranton resident. I'm also a member of the Green Village Neighborhood Association, and I had the opportunity to attend the last Southside Neighborhood meeting, where they had each of the council candidates speak. And that was the first time that I knew of that that was the Bond property, the PSN Realty property across the street. Kenneth Bond has been abeying on the existence of the city of Scranton since, when I know, 2005, I personally encountered him. And if you look at all of his properties, and the mortgages he's pulled, he robs Peter to Pay Paul. Basically, that's what he's done. But I, the question had come up, resident after resident had asked the panel, Mr. Perry was one of the panel members, about what could be done. And Mr. Perry said he would refer to Mr. Hinton. Well, we're at the 11th hour, and I offered my suggestions on what has been done, and what can be done, and what should be done. An emergency declaration, courthouse is down the street, 9 to 4. I can't imagine a judge who wouldn't sign that demolition order. The problem is, is that the departments within the city of Scranton perhaps aren't working together. It's not solely Mr. Hinton's issue. It's the Law Department, Police Department, it goes on and on. But primarily, certainly Licensing and Inspection, DPW, and the Law Department. This is not, and it is an easy thing. We have had multi-properities that we have torn down in this city as an emergency declaration. Your city engineer, your Lips Director, that's it. It can be done. You know, unfortunately, now we're in a situation where Kenneth Bond may bankrupt that PSN Realty, and you're all left holding the bag. I'm left holding the bag as a taxpayer, and that's not acceptable. So to say that all of a sudden we know, we don't all of a sudden know, we have known. So I would ask that certainly, every single department be given, asked to be given a report on what has been done there, what has been seen there, and that if the Law Department can't do it, Solicitor menorah can do it. Because now, it's in, unfortunately, this is now in your hands, unfortunately, but it is. And again, they're terrific. It was so nice for them to invite us all over there, and I'm extending an invitation on behalf of our Neighborhood Association for the second Tuesday of May, where we will hear all council candidates to have the opportunity to come and speak, and give their platform, because certainly, we need accountability across the city, obviously. So I do thank you for your time, and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Fifth order, five-day motions.
Mr. Perry, any motions or comments?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Ms. Reed, if we could, just send a follow-up on Dorothy Street to see if there was any movement on that, or if they were able to at least check the situation. Maybe they got on site, but they just haven't made any repairs yet. Also, the 3200 block of Pittston Avenue, there's been several requests for speed enforcement there. So if we could maybe get the speed indicator put on the list to get moved to that block of Pittston Avenue, that would be most helpful to see if there's actually an issue there, what time of day it's happening. We talked a little bit about the, mostly about the multi-units and the garbage fees, something that, you know, I don't know if we talked about, and maybe Solicitor menorah, you can kind of help me with, and if you guys are in agreement, if we can maybe make amendment to our rental registration that we're doing right now, to, with multi-units, or even any rental, because rental is a business in the city of Scranton. That's what it is. And I think, you know, we need to hold our businesses accountable first within the city of Scranton, and we need to do it consistently and fairly, not just who decides they want to pay, and who decides they're not going to. You know, and I spoke on to this point before, we're in two, we're fighting two battles right now with the past due garbage fees. Where, how are we going to collect what we already lost, and what are we going to do going forward to make sure we don't get ourselves back in the same sand trap, and we're swinging a sandwich to get out again, because we don't want to do that. Some of the, well, you know, we've been through this topic quite a few many times, and I know something that right now I'm doing is, right now, I'm on the fence of the side of going to magistrate for a little quicker result. I'm not there yet where I would like to leave garbage on the street. I'm just not comfortable with doing that. But I definitely don't think the liens that are posed on these properties are doing absolutely anything for us, and we need to do more. As far as going forward, I know we did talk about embedding this into the tax structure of the city, which is, absolutely makes sense, you know, and it needs to be done. It needs to happen. We are taxed. We do pay a good chunk of our hard-earned money in city taxes, and it needs to be made easy for us, and it doesn't need to come in a separate bill, and it should be absorbed in our property taxes. And that's something that the city is responsible to make sure happens. Getting back to the multi-units, that's something that we could be, we can move quicker on. They shouldn't be able to operate a business if they're not paying their garbage fees. It just should not be, because we know what happens, and we've all been in this city for quite some time, and we have many people that own properties, and one, or two, or three properties, and what happens, you know, I think someone made the point of, you know, robbing Peter to Pay Paul. They'll take whatever assets they have in one piece of property, they'll take whatever they could from there, and they'll move on to purchase another property, and they just kind of keep going and going, and whatever asset has the most, whatever's most liquid, they can pull more money out of, they use that to balance it, and just kind of grow their landlord-ing empire, and then it falls down. And it's awful, and they just, and most times, they're out-of-state people. They don't live here. And so they're not invested in our community. They're not invested in our city. They're saying, "I'm just going to collect my rents, and live where I live, and whatever you have to look at every day, or put up with every day, is okay." And I think we need to say that that's not okay. And we need to not let them operate the business of renting property in the city of Scranton, if that's how they're going to operate. And one of the things we can do right now is holding them accountable for their past due garbage fees. And if we need to go back and make an amendment to rental registration, then I say that's what we do, and we do that as soon as possible. And we also need to make sure that that, and again, Mr. Menorah, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but past due if I'm wrong, but past due fees also triggers inspections. And inspections can, and will lead to safer places, and that's what it's about. It's about having a safe place, a good neighbor, a good, and somebody good in your community, not the blight of the community. In too many places, in too many parts of our neighborhoods, these multi-unit out-of-town landlords aren't a good neighbor. Some are, but for the most part, they generate most of the blight, and it's just not fair for all of us. And so I think that's something that we need to do. On a lighter note, I just want to say thank you to Manuka Lions. They put on a great autism awareness, you can see them wearing my pin for Autism Awareness Month. Every last weekend of the month, they just put on one of the best benefits nights for autism, and that's something that's close to my family. And, you know, it was very nice seeing the community get together and just seeing everybody for such a great event. All the volunteers, they just work tirelessly for weeks and weeks and weeks to plan this, and it was a success, and they're already planning next year. So I just want to say thank you, and they did a great job. That's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Any motions or comments?
Yes. First, I'd like to just start, I've had some complaints on the road conditions, if we could send these along to DPW, especially East Mountain Road, which wasn't paved too long ago, also Linwood and Florida Avenue on East Mountain, as well as the 1800 and 1900 blocks of South Webster Avenue. The hill, mostly on the 1800 block, is especially bad to the point where it soon won't even be considered a road. I've also been getting some complaints regarding stormwater issues with all the rain we've been getting, and it seems like a lot of the issues stem from areas where storm drains are either inadequate or they just don't exist at all. Crane Street in Manuka is one of the examples that I had brought up this week, where at the bottom, there just isn't any rain, storm drains, so the water just flows down sidewalks until it makes it to the river. And also Penwood area section doesn't have, you know, many storm drains either. Also, the flooding issue, the residents in the area, Pittston Avenue and Kane Street, that it's been occurring over and over again. But I believe DPW is supposed to go out and fix a broken pipe on Kane Street that would alleviate the problem. So Ms. Reed, would you be able to also send a letter to DPW to see when they'll begin work to fix that pipe on Kane Street? Now onto PSN Realty and Ken Bond. First, I'd like to thank Chris Kelly for his outstanding reporting to bring this particular slumlord to light, and also to all the members of the Southside Neighborhood Association for passing along all that information. I'm going to pass it along to my colleagues on council and also to the administration. But in terms of what we can do to begin to address these issues, I'd like to first request from the, send a request to the administration for an immediate emergency declaration for the demolition of the structures located at 1616 Cedar Avenue and also 1620 and 622 Pine Street. Both properties have had fires in recent years. Because of the damage caused by each fire, the structural integrity of these properties could pose a threat to public safety, and I believe immediate action is needed. Such an emergency declaration was used at least twice last year, once for a property that caught fire on the corner of Hickory and South Webster Avenue, and also another on the 500 of Palm Street. I'd like to also request licensing, that Licensing and Inspection and the city engineer assess and complete a written report to council on all other condemned PSN properties by next Monday's meeting. In addition, I'm requesting that Licensing and Inspection inspect and report on all other PSN properties, and to please provide photos, inspection reports, citations, and/or notices of violation on PSN properties. The city's law department can also begin to take action, so I'm requesting that they perform what's called as a bring-down or a title search, consisting of these mortgages, liens, and taxes of every property owned by PSN. In addition to that, I also think the law department needs to send a letter to the New York Bar Association reporting Mr. Bond operating as PSN Realty for his consistent failure to pay taxes and/or fees, failure to properly receive notice, and failure to maintain his properties. And then finally, I'd like to touch on the settlement of a lawsuit brought against Mr. Hinton alleging bias and selective enforcement. I'd like to know from the city's law department why the city's insurance did not cover the settlement, and if the city must also cover any attorney's fees as part of that settlement. I'd also like to know if there are any other current lawsuits concerning Mr. Hinton the city is also engaged in. So Ms. Reed, would you be able to send those requests along to the administration? In just over a year as a councilman, the number one complaint I consistently get over and over again are complaints concerning licensing and inspection. The ineffective leadership in that office has not only forced contractors to refuse to work in this city, it has also contributed to the deterioration of the quality of life in our neighborhoods, is now costing taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. People are absolutely fed up with this nonsense, and they want to know when will enough be enough. I've had countless people tell me since Saturday that they think that Mr. Hinton should be forced to resign for his incompetence. Quite frankly, I don't think Mr. Hinton should be given the luxury to resign. I believe he should be fired so someone could be putting that, put it ahead of that office so that the job could actually get done. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any motions or comments?
Well, I'll just keep on going down the PSN Realty rabbit hole, and maybe add another layer to this expose if I can. So I did a personal driving tour of all of PSN's properties, and what I found, what we all know, were mostly abandoned and blighted properties. However, in at least several cases, I found investment properties that would appear to be producing income through the occupancy of tenants. 447 Kofax, 1708 Linden, 442-444 North Irving, all appear to be occupied. Several other properties gave the appearance of being occupied, but I wasn't able to confirm that. 1700 Roslin, 732 Harrison, 2426 Clay, and 1012 Clay. So under the city's rental registration ordinance that this county, or this council passed, in fact, this council wrote, the following sections exist. Section 373-9, violations and penalties, subsection C. No landlord or owner with outstanding fines resulting from violation of municipal ordinances as well as delinquent taxes and/or garbage fees shall be eligible to obtain a license to rent residential real estate in the municipality of Scranton unless such fines, taxes, and fees are paid in full. So according to the newspaper article, as noted, the Lips Department says that none of PSN's properties are even registered with the city. Yet several are operating as rental units, and apparently PSN is collecting rent. So under section 373-10, Rental Escrow Program, in addition to all other penalty and enforcement remedies established by this chapter or by any other Scranton ordinance, including but not limited to the Property Maintenance Code, owners/landlords of residential rental units within the municipality of Scranton shall be subject to the municipality of Scranton Rental Escrow Program, which is hereby established by this chapter. And I'm going to read a few chapters. I know it's a little dry, but we have to get through it. Subsection A, owners/landlords of residential rental units that have not been registered by April 1st of the licensed year pursuant to this chapter shall be sent written notice of noncompliance by registered or certified mail, addressed to the record of such property on the tax records of the County of Lackawanna. Failure to receive said notice shall not affect the effectiveness of the transmittal of said notice. Subsection B, effective with the next monthly rental period, following transmittal of said notice, the owner/landlord is prohibited from receiving rents from the unregistered residential property. Subsection C, effective with the next monthly rental period, following transmittal of said notices, the Scranton Code Enforcement Officer is to inspect the unregistered unit for the purpose of determining if a tenant or tenants are residing in an unregistered unit. Subsection D, should tenants be found to be residing in an unregistered unit, the tenants or tenants shall be provided a copy of this chapter, together with a written notice or directive from the Code Enforcement Officer, that rent for the first calendar month following the inspection and for the ensuing calendar months is to have, to have to be paid to the municipality of Scranton for deposit into the Scranton Rental Escrow account unless otherwise directed. There are several other sections in the Escrow Program, but that's the basis of what can be done. So I would like to ask our Lips Department, again, to begin the process of enforcing section 7373-10 in its entirety by sending letters to all of the properties owned by PSN Realty, then enforcing the balance of this section to the point where any occupied units and their tenants are giving their rent check to the City of Scranton while all PSN Realty's taxes, garbage liens, et cetera, are still unpaid. It is disgraceful that we are allowing this landlord, the worst of the worst in what he owes the City of Scranton, almost a quarter of a million dollars, to operate and collect rents in some of his buildings when we have an ordinance, we have a law that specifically addresses and forbids this situation to ever occur. It's unbelievable. So we can do it. We have the law on our side, we have the rules on our side, it just has to be enforced. Along with the suggestions made by Councilman Donahue and others, there are tools in our tool bed felt to stop this kind of egregious activity by absentee landlords that have permeated our city for far too long. And finally, on a totally different subject, I didn't do this last week, so I was called out from a friend of mine, but as I do every week, my final words are, every day is your chance to make this city a little better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gawn. Any motions or comments?
Yeah, you know what? I don't even really know where to begin at this point. First of all, you know, let me just say this, because I was thinking of it as, after the news article and then listening to some of my colleagues speak, I'm sure there's other Mr. Bonds out there. I mean, this is just one case, maybe not as egregious as $250,000, but I'm sure there are others, in fact, I know there are others, just from going to the neighborhood meetings, that owe these different fees and don't keep their properties up. And, you know, I applaud Chris Kelly in the Scranton Times, but it is, you know, as an elected official, it's a little sad and embarrassing that a reporter from the Times has to uncover this. And quite frankly, we should, we all should take a bit of responsibility in this and accept some blame. You know, we are elected officials, and this has happened under our watch, even though we don't have as much control as the administration does. But, I mean, just for myself, I think we should accept some sort of responsibility, because it is, there's only one word for this, and it's embarrassing. You know, listening to the different fixes, and I agree with what Mrs. Schumacher said about two or three weeks ago. I hope this doesn't happen, but I've seen it happen over the last five years. This is a hot-button issue, it's a hot topic, and then it will eventually peter out and it will die out. People will either forget about it, and we'll be back here again in five years. And the reason that I think for that, and I want to be careful that it does not seem like I'm, you know, blaming anyone, but there is no coherent vision to deal with this problem and a lot of other problems that occur in this city, especially with blight. And I'll give you one example, and Councilman Evans can back me up on this because he was there. The county had a blight task force. There was, every municipality in Lackawanna County was invited to it. Councilman Evans went as our representative on council. Councilman Evans, was there anyone from the administration there, present?
No, there wasn't.
No. Again, part and parcel of the problem. Now, I have talked about what Mrs. O'Malley talked about for the last five years, and again, I don't want to drone on because I've said this before, there is no leadership. Zero. Zero. What happens in this city over the last five years is there's a fire, we put it out. There's a condemned building, and we respond. There is no coherent vision. There's no forethought. That's the problem. So Mr. Bond is just a morsel of the bigger issue. And, you know, I blame Mayor Courtright, but you can blame mayors going back 150 years. It's the same problem. We will sit up here, we will talk about it, we'll have Ms. Madsen and others come from the neighborhood groups, and I can almost guarantee, although I hope not, we'll be right back here in five years, unless, for once, city officials come up with a coherent vision. You have people from the administration that actually attend a task force that people put together that, from what I understand, was pretty well done. There was all different things that came out of that meeting, but then there's never any follow-up. Again, I think we should all take a little bit of blame for that. There is a major disconnect between this council and the administration. I don't care what anybody says. I've seen it over the last five years. We waste ink on paper. I send a letter asking for information, I'm not asking for anything that's not relevant, just like Councilman Donahue, Councilman Perry, Councilman Rogan, and Councilman Evans. Yet it either goes unanswered or we get some kind of bizarre answer. I mean, I can go through example after example. And we're on the front lines here every Monday, and sometimes we sit up here and look like doofuses, and maybe sometimes we are, but we don't have answers because we can't get them from the mayor and the administration. Take Mayor Courtright out of the picture, Mayor Smith, Mayor Jones. When you're the mayor, you need to step up and let people know what the plan is, what the vision is. We could sit up here all day and talk about different things, and we're going to send Councilman Donahue's letter, which I think he was right on every point he made, but it makes no difference if you don't have the leader of the city standing behind. The question is, how did Mr. Bond get to this point? How was he able to buy up all these properties and go scot-free? Didn't pay one, didn't pay any rental registration fee or nothing. Now, I'm sure we'll send another letter to Mr. Hinton, and it will go unanswered. And again, take Pat Hinton out of the equation, Bill Jones, Bill Smith, Bob Jones, doesn't matter. It does not matter. The fact of the matter is, Councilman Donahue brought up Mr. Hinton, the mayor, the mayor allowed this to go on over the last five years. We just had to pay out, you're going to pay out, $245,000 to Mr. Brunel. The city's insurance policy won't cover it. And there's another one from, I think, his brother, and my guess is we're going to have to pay on that. So we could be looking at close to half a million dollars, who knows? All the while, Mr. Hinton has a, is worried apparently about a coffee shop at Naught Park, which for the love of God, it's the most ridiculous thing. And again, take Mr. Hinton out of it, because I have nothing against him, I know him personally, I think he's a fine person. Put in anybody else, Bob Jones, Bob Smith. In what, in what, in whose right mind would you let a city employee open up a, or even bid on it and open up a coffee shop at Naught Park? And he said in the newspaper, he's got to get contractors to come up there. He's the head of Licensing and Inspections. I mean, you've got to be kidding me. And this is allowed to go on? And again, this is part and parcel of the problem. And I'm blaming people, but I'm taking responsibility for it as well, because we're all to blame, every elected official that's here and every elected official that's come before us. So my plea is to the mayor and to the administration that they will take our suggestions and do the things Councilman Donahue would recommend it, but don't stop there. Come up with a coherent vision. All five of us are, live here, we're willing to work with the mayor and the administration. That's why two weeks ago, I had requested that, just like other cities do, this, it's not brain surgery, they would come at least quarterly, I'd even take twice a year, and sit before the council and answer questions. Nobody's going to bite, you know, that we're going to be respectful, but we need better communication, because we sit up here every Monday, and it's, it drives me nuts. We've been doing it for five, I've been doing it for five years. I just talked to my mother the other day, I said, I don't even know what I'm doing this for anymore. We go through the same thing, and there's never any real action. So maybe Mr. Bond, maybe finally, you know, maybe someday we can thank him, because maybe this is the point in the city that people start taking this stuff seriously. And the 75% of the people that actually do pay, and the good people that do take care of their civic responsibilities, can finally be relieved that they know the city's actually going to do something serious for once. And I had other things, but that's it for tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. I guess I'll address the PSN Realty issue as well. I did a little research as well on this, and specifically the property at 616 Cedar, just to give some background for those who are watching and may not understand the real estate business or landlord business. So this purchase was, this property was purchased in February of 2004 for $85,000 by Mr. Bond through an LLC. It's a seven-unit property. Now, when it was purchased, the rents were certainly much lower in 2004 than they are now, but just taking an extremely low rent of $500 per unit on those seven units, in one month, this property is generating over $3,000 in income for the landlord when it was operational. So you could see how short of a time it is for a landlord to recoup their money with a rental property. Unfortunately, what Mr. Bond has done, and I know Councilman Gawn mentioned it, he's not the only one. And I'll give the newspaper credit for giving, putting a platform- And I'll give the newspaper credit for giving, putting a platform out there for this issue, but there are many, many other landlords that are doing it, maybe not as egregious, but are doing the same thing. They're primarily out-of-town landlords that purchase a property for a very low price, which was the case with this property, for seven units. They rent it, don't repair a thing, and just extract every penny they can out of the property. Don't pay the taxes, don't pay the garbage fee. When it goes up for a sheriff sale or a judicial sale, they make a payment arrangement, make a minimum payment, goes away till the next year. And continue to string this out as long as they can, and then at the end, they just say, well, I got my money out of the property and abandoned it. That's what's happened in this situation. And there are other landlords that have done the same thing through the years, maybe on not as large of a scale as, as this case here. And it's one thing if a landlord has a property and they fall on hard times and they can't, you know, can't keep it up or can't manage it and they lose it to tax sale or something, but there's no question that this individual knew exactly what he was doing. He's not behind because he didn't do a good job managing rentals or, you know, things didn't go well for him. This was his whole strategy, was to get as much cash out of the properties as possible, pay as little taxes and fees as possible, and then at the end, just wash his hands with it and say, I'm done. It's not a good business model long-term, but in the short-term, I'm sure he extracted just from this 616 Cedar property, well in excess of $300,000 over the 14, 15 years that he's owned, owned this property. I would like to go back and see exactly which years all of these taxes are owed for, what's been paid on each year on all these properties. Not to punish him, and obviously he is a huge offender, but so the city could put reforms into place so people cannot take advantage of the system in this way. The reason why the city and the county is typically lenient on people who are behind on their taxes with setting up a payment arrangement and allowing them to make payments is because the last thing any governmental body wants to do is take away a home from a homeowner who's struggling. This is not that scenario. What this individual did is took the system that was put in place, and it's a lenient system as far as paying your fees and your taxes for the homeowner. And for homeowners, I believe there should be some grace period. Somebody loses their job, somebody has health issues, they should be able to go on a payment plan. A rental property that's bringing in 30, $40,000 a year in cash flow shouldn't be given that same leniency that a, one individual in a single-family home is given. So I think there needs to be a change on how the tax sales are done. If this property was up for tax sale after a year or two, we wouldn't have gotten to this point. And I understand, he played the game, he's a lawyer, he's, instead of focusing on having a good rental business, he decided to do it the other way and try to pay as little as possible during the years. I agree with the recommendations that Councilman Perry and Evans made regarding using the rental registration as a tool to try to crack down on landlords, but I do think, especially with the first one, and it's gonna wind up in court and it's gonna take some time, but I think we need to take an all-the-above approach. But I, I truly believe that the biggest way to deter this from happening in the future is to have a different set of rules for those who fall behind on investment properties versus people who fall behind on a single-family home. And as I said before, there should be some leniency when you're talking about somebody's home. When you're talking about a rental property, if somebody fell behind and they're, they're not doing a good job at, as a landlord, which is a business, as Mr. Perry mentioned, they should lose the property. And it's, it's plain and simple as far as I'm concerned. That's all I have to say on that issue, I'm sure we'll be talking about it much more. Just two citizens' requests to add to the letter that Councilman Donahue mentioned. On East Mountain Road, I was contacted from a resident on the corner, on Seymour, and the curbing is all eroded away. I know that the ones you mentioned also had pretty much the same issues. If we could add that to that letter as well. And then also, another property that, and I know I emailed about this earlier in the week, I don't know if anyone remembers, about a year or so ago, a boiler exploded in the basement of a property on the 600 block of North Bromley Avenue in West Scranton. That home has been condemned. It was basically partially blown off the foundation from this explosion. And if we could also, and I know we sent it earlier in the week, but just follow up on that, 'cause it really is a dangerous situation. That part of West Side, the houses are very close to one another, and with the foundation issue, the neighbors are concerned that with one of these storms that we have or just over time, that the house is going to collapse on one of the neighboring properties. And that is all I have for tonight.
Councilman Gawn, if you don't mind, I rarely interrupt, but I have one more comment on PSN, if I might. And your math sort of got me thinking about this. The properties I mentioned, even if they're only two families and if all of them are occupied and they all average about $600 a month in rent, which is probably a modest amount, we're looking at approximately $100,000 a year in rental that is now being put into that landlord's pocket while he's not paying anything else. So just keep that in mind. $100,000 in potential income that he's earning on those properties. So, and we'll know more as hopefully Lips goes out and does some investigation, but I just wanted to get that point across. Thanks.
Excellent point. Thank you.
5B for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant for the redevelopment assistance capital program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Office of the Budget in the amount of $1 million, accepting and dispersing the grant if the application is successful, and coordinate the use of grant funds with the Mimi Equities for the project to be named the Wyoming Avenue Development.
This time, entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The ayes have it and so move.
Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 112, 2019, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Kohansky &amp; Company PC to provide the city of Scranton independent post audit for fiscal years ending December 31, 2018, December 31, 2019, December 31, 2020, and December 31, 2021.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 113, 2019, approving the financing by the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority of certain capital projects for the benefit of Marywood University, a Pennsylvania not-for-profit corporation, declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the city of Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, and the area served by Marywood University to have the project provided by and financed through the authority, designating the mayor of the city or, in the mayor's absence, the president or vice president of the city council as the person to act on behalf of the city council, as the applicable elected representative within the meaning of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended, authorizing such mayor of the city or the president or vice president of the city council of the city to take certain actions on behalf of the city council of the city as such applicable elected representative, and authorizing other necessary and appropriate action.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question?
Roll call please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, if there's, item 7B is legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.